Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this adjourned session of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, President of the Minneapolis City Council. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano, Gordon, Connor, Reich, Bender, Glidden, Yang, Johnson, Quincy, Worsami is absent, Goodman, Frye, here. President Johnson, there are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Our next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. I need to look through the audience and see if we have any elected guests. Sometimes we have people from other boards and commissions with us, but I don't see anyone. So, want to welcome, Councilmember Worsami has joined us. This past Friday, November 13th, Hanipen County mailed out property tax notices which identified the potential property tax impact based on the 2016 budget that was proposed by Mayor Hodges. Tonight's hearing provides the public an opportunity to comment on that proposed budget, in part based on information included in the property tax notices, as well as information that's been made available by the city. A copy of the mayor's proposed 2016 budget is posted to the city's website, and a full printed copy is available for public inspection through the city clerk. The council's Budget Subcommittee, under the leadership of Councilmember Quincy, has conducted hearings on each department's budget request over the past several weeks, all of which has been broadcast on public access television, as well as the city's website. All documentation related to the proposed budget is also posted and available from the city's website. Before I open the meeting, I'd like to inform folks that we will be taking speakers in the order that they are registered. If you want to address the city council as a part of tonight's meeting and haven't already registered, I encourage you to do so now. You can register by signing up with the clerk, over in the corner here. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. Also, if you have documents or other supporting materials you would like to submit for the public record of this hearing, please give those materials to the city clerk. We have overflow seating in Room 319, which is just across the hall, in case we need extra space. And a live broadcast of the hearing is available in that space. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rule to allow members of the public to address the city council.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Before we open the public hearing, I will repeat, we'll be taking speakers in the order they are registered. You can register with the city clerk. We ask everyone to be respectful of the comments offered this evening. And if you are a speaker, we would ask that you conclude your comments when the time has expired. Councilmember Glidden will give you a little high sign, and allow the next speaker the opportunity to address the council. Councilmember Glidden, Vice President Glidden, will be monitoring the time, and a counter is available to help you monitor... Well, I guess our counter isn't working. I'm sorry. So, Councilmember Glidden will give you the high sign. You also may submit written materials for the record by giving it to the city clerk. So with that, we're ready to open the public hearing. And the first speaker is Nick Mason. And behind Nick is Dan Mitchell. So if Dan would be willing to stand behind Mr. Mason, so that we can keep things moving, that would be great. Mr. Mason?
Thank you, President Johnson, members of the council. My name is Nick Mason. I'm a resident, and I'm here tonight because I'm the Ward 12 Representative and Chair of the city's Bicycle Advisory Committee. Minneapolis supports bicycling because it is good for its people, for our environment, and for the health of our economy. In 2008, I worked with city staff to fill out the city of Minneapolis's first national bike friendly community application. It is a great tool that sets national benchmarks to see how we're doing against our peers. Back then, we were awarded a Silver Designation. It was a little disappointing, but we got to work on a lot of projects. And by 2010, we reapplied and moved up to Gold. That put us in about the top 10 cities in the nation, about four and a half years ago now. Since then, Minneapolis has done its best work to keep moving things forward. In that time around the country, the bar has also been rising. Peer cities and cities who we haven't expected to invest in bicycling and walking have done so, and they have been investing heavily. On Monday, while our neighbors in Madison, Wisconsin are celebrating their new Platinum Status, putting them in the top five communities in the nation, Minneapolis learned that we remain in our same gold position. We are now in the top 30 communities in a ranking that has nearly 200 data points across evaluation, engineering, education, encouragement, and enforcement. We expect our formal feedback from the league soon, but we know that completing our Protected Bikeway Network, passing a strong Complete Streets policy, expanding our Safe Routes to School program, and investing in a system that encourages those of all ages and abilities to ride freely throughout our community are the top priorities. I'd like to thank the council for their previous support of bicycling and walking projects and programs, and I'd really like to thank the mayor for a budget that invests in some great projects and programs for next year, and ask the council for their support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mitchell, and then followed by Reverend Tim Hart Anderson.
My name is Doug Mitchell. I'm at 4945 Seventeenth Avenue South. I'm one of the clergy at Westminster Presbyterian and a part of downtown congregations to end homelessness. But before we turn to addressing housing and homelessness, I just want to say that we are all aware that there is a lot going on in the city tonight, that we are not here oblivious of the context of what's happening at the Fourth Precinct and in other places in the city, and that people are choosing to act in a variety of ways to try to make this the most just city they can, and to protect the quality of life for all citizens. So that my sense is that the things that are happening tonight are all of a piece of addressing the quality of life in the city, and we just want to recognize the fact that there are a lot of different ways that's being expressed this evening. Thank you.
Reverend Tim Hart Anderson?
I'm Tim Hart Anderson, the pastor at Westminster Presbyterian Church downtown. I live at 4753 Emerson Avenue South. And I'm also representing the Senior Interfaith Clergy Group. I convene that group downtown. This is a group of Muslim and Jewish and Christian, Roman Catholic Protestant senior clergy that helped form downtown congregations to end homelessness some years ago. It was the religious community's response to heading home Hanipen. We wanted to step up and do our part in joining with partners like this council. I do want to start by thanking the council for its commitment to affordable housing, especially Councilmember Goodman. We're very pleased with your $1.5 million amendment, and are in full support of that. Also, the mayor's $1 million initiative for larger families. We see that, indeed. Each of us, in our own religious traditions, feel a strong imperative, a religious imperative, a moral imperative, an ethical imperative for justice. Justice takes a variety of shapes and forms. One of those ways is equitable housing. A city that is economically diverse is a healthy city, the city with a future, and we're in support of anything we can do as partners with you all and many others to provide as much affordable housing as possible. I'm also part of the Downtown Council. I'm on the Board of the Downtown Council. We know of the residential growth, the market-driven residential growth downtown, and it's terrific for our city, but we need to respond like that kind of growth on the affordable side. And we want to be partners with you and encourage any further funding that the council can offer in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Karins, followed by Rebecca Lucio.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Sonia Karins. My husband, John, and I live at 1766 James Avenue South. We're proud residents of Councilmember Goodman's Board. I'm co-convenor of the Great River Landing Task Force, and I'm speaking on behalf of Beacon tonight, an interfaith collaborative of over 70 congregations throughout the metro area now, who are committed to ending homelessness. Great River Landing will be our next project, and it is one of several that we've been doing over the years that are designed to end homelessness and focus on people with very low income. And I want to give you just about three examples. Audubon Crossing is subsidized supportive housing for formerly homeless families. Creekside is one for workforce families with some subsidized units. Lenoke is for households of people who have been previously homeless, and it's actually individuals as well. They no longer need intensive services and are able to move into more independent living. I want to make a point now about Great River Landing in particular. This is going to be a high-quality housing project for up to 72 former offenders. These are mainly fathers, and they're people who are making a commitment to transform their lives as they move into the housing which we will be building within about a two-year period. And they're committing to becoming stronger parents, employees, renters, and citizens of the community. We need the council to continue to support the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It makes for strong communities, and we appreciate that. In thanking you, I want to especially thank Councilmember Goodman for your strong support of the trust fund. I would have thanked Mayor Hodges. We're very impressed with her commitment to housing larger families.
And if you could wrap it up.
To you all, for making this a place for all of us to live. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rebecca Lucio, followed by Jeff Washburn.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rebecca Lucero. I live at 795 Edmund Avenue in St. Paul. I work for Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity, and I'm here with the Make Homes Happen Minneapolis Coalition with over 25 organizations who support the entire continuum of housing. I want to start out by thanking the council for their commitment to fully fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is one of the innovative tools that we know makes a difference in creating a home for Minneapolis families. As I know you know, the need for affordable housing is much larger than we can solve through this one tool alone. That's why I want to spend a moment to talk about how critically important it is to develop opportunities for low-income families and families of color to access affordable ownership opportunities as well. Minnesota has one of the largest racial homeownership gaps in the nation. In Minneapolis, the homeownership rate for white households is around 59% compared to 23% for households of color. And that's shameful. By investing in affordable homeownership development, we can bring stability to families and equity to our communities. The proposed city budget prioritizes maintaining an inventory of hundreds of vacant lots, and at the same time, programs that proactively reallocate those lots into affordable homes continue to see funding cuts. The budget proposed makes it look like there is more invested in ownership housing development than there really is. Most is actually invested in maintaining empty lots. Only approximately $1 million of the affordable single-family housing budget actually supports the development of single-family ownership housing. For Green Homes North, a program designed to put 100 families into empty lots in North Minneapolis, that is a total of 13 homes planned for 2016. Thirteen, that's it. Very little of the money going into this program comes from the city. It's great that we leverage state and federal dollars, but we have hundreds of lots across the city, and I know each of you are just as anxious as I am to come up with a vision and a solid plan to fill these empty lots with affordable homes. We are excited to work alongside each of you to create this vision for affordable homeownership opportunities for the whole Minneapolis community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Washburn, and then Jay Avi Akonaros. Mr. Washburn?
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmember, Council President Johnson, councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Jeff Washburn. I live in the Fourth, Fifth Ward of North Minneapolis, and my work as the Director of the City of Lakes Community Land Trust allows me the opportunity to work across our great city. As of next week, we all can collectively celebrate what will be our 200th Community Land Trust Home in the city of Minneapolis after the last 10 years. For those who aren't aware, our organization and the work we do is fairly complex, but to break it down simply, we assist households that but for an added investment wouldn't be able to buy a home. Equally important to that is if and when that household ever goes to sell their home, we're there to ensure that it stays affordable for another income-qualified household. And lastly, most importantly, if we help somebody buy a home, we need to be there to ensure that as best as possible, we can ensure successful homeownership for them in the community. Our 200-plus homes, as of next week, will represent over $36 million in community investment over the last 10 years here in the city of Minneapolis. City investments have been leveraged at a rate of nine to one. We've also been able to raise $3 million in outside funds from the state, the county, Met Council to bring into our city. Increasingly important is that ability to show that there's a local match. Our ability to bring resources, helping more households in our community, is really dependent upon that local match. So to echo Rebecca's comments, I think that added investment in affordable homeownership is greatly needed. We were recently partying to a North Minneapolis African-American Housing Opportunity Study. Some of the highlights that came out of that was approximately, of the 900, close to 900 folks that responded to the survey, approximately 66% of the respondents have lived in North Minneapolis for 10 years. 85% state that they liked living in North Minneapolis. Only 13% of those who responded are currently homeowners, and of the 87% that don't currently own a home, 74% wanted the opportunity to be able to purchase a home. There's not only a need for affordable homeownership, but more importantly, a desire for it. Now is a time to proactively take steps to match a resonant desire with good, common-sense community development. For us, we were able to demonstrate over 60% of our households are of color, and there are organizations like ours that can make deep impact for the community. Thank you for your investments in affordable housing, but I look forward to working with you and seeing how we can go deeper on those investments.
Thank you. Jay Avi Akonaros?
I'm the president. The name was entered in error.
Thank you. And then Bob Weber, followed by Kevin Cast. Bob Weber, Kevin Cast. Dawn Adotson?
Yes, the president.
Thank you. Margie Miller, followed by Ruth Lundquist. Ms. Miller?
Good evening. I'm Margie Miller. I'm the Director of Southeast Seniors in Southeast Minneapolis. I live in Southwest Minneapolis. We provide services for seniors in the 55414 zip code, so they can live well in the homes that they love. The services we provide include nursing services through a contract with Fairview Home Care on a sliding fee scale, coordination of other services, outreach nursing, Ask a Nurse/Block Nurse programs, chore services, exercise classes, intergenerational activities, and more. The seniors I am asking you to help have been paying taxes all their lives. Now they need a little help. One of the first seniors we served said, "A little help can help a lot." That was true when our program started in 1988 and is still true to this day. We are thankful that you are providing funding for the Nakomas Healthy Seniors in the 2016 budget. We are asking that you also provide funding for Southeast Seniors and the Longfellow-Seward Healthy Seniors programs. We are thankful that the city of Minneapolis did provide funding for our three programs from 1999 to 2012. The number of Minnesotans over the age of 65 will more than double over the next 25 years, so there is a strong need for our programs. The vision of the city of Minneapolis, as you know, is a city where all people are safe, healthy, and have equitable opportunities for success and happiness. A city for a lifetime. I am asking that you provide the same vision for the seniors that live in the city. Most of the seniors that we serve are quite isolated and just getting by on their Social Security income. I have lived in Minneapolis for 53 of my 61 years, and my husband and I plan on leaving our home feet-first. So, we love it here in the city. I thank you for listening. Our next person is Ruth Lundquist, and we asked seniors, and people didn't want to come out on a rainy night, but Ruth said, "Yes, I definitely will do that."
Thank you. Ruth Lundquist, followed by Darla Wexler. Ms. Lundquist?
Yeah, just a few steps to your left. Sorry to be... Yeah, let me just take your arm. Oops. I need to... Okay. Right. There's the podium. All right. And if you'll move over just a little bit, sort of like a...
Thank you, members of the council, for giving me the opportunity to share my personal experiences as relates to Southeast Resources. I have had some never-to-be-forgotten experiences. They have provided money for me to have the lifeline in my home. I live alone, and they have been helpful, wanting me to not be by myself and really not be able to have any resources. So they have given me, they pay for this or for me each month because it could become something of a problem to me. I also have been a part of the foot care admin group from the Fairview Hospital. They send a nurse to help me with foot care and this sort of thing, and they finance that mostly, too. And they have done great, that has been a great boon to me. Also, they have provided a shopper for me to get groceries every two weeks. And the wonderful thing about Southeast Resources is that they really care about the people who help you. They are people who really do care. You become actual friends with them, and I've certainly found them, they're most helpful. And also, they have provided me with a reader, someone to read my mail, someone to go through things with me and help me with different types of things like this. Paperwork that needs to be done. We know that all of us have tons of paperwork to do with everything, and they've done that. And there are just countless ways in which they have been of great benefit to me. And financially, I really believe that this group should have funds because they do a lot, and they don't ask a lot of... Well, they ask questions about, of course, your income, but I mean, they don't ask you They really want to help you, and they know the needs of the people. I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lundquist. Darla Wexler, followed by Mary Albright?
My name is Darla Wexler. My husband and I have lived at 1904 Franklin Avenue Southeast for the last 38 years, raised our family there. I'm here to implore you to financially support the Block Nurse Program in our neighborhood. I had the great privilege, all of my professional career, serving as the primary nurse. At that time, I did the Medicare, all the way down to foot care services. Later on, I did the outreach nursing piece, and I had the great privilege of going into seniors' homes time and time again and helping them create a care plan that meant they were safe, they were connected to their neighbors. We engendered countless hours of volunteers and connect all three neighborhoods in our Southeast area by getting both the board-serving and also the volunteers from all three neighborhoods, so we connect those neighborhoods together in that way. And anything that the senior needs in order to stay at home safely, we try to address, from dog walking to the full-blown care right out at the hospital. And we can prove that we really do keep people out of nursing homes, out of hospitals, out of emergency rooms. So, for my husband and I, who now find ourselves in the graying of America, we joy to think that we have the Block Nurse Program in our neighborhood. We use the funds very judiciously, and we would very much appreciate your financial support. We contribute greatly to the well-being of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Albright, followed by Mary Ann Dalby?
Thank you, Madam President and councilmembers. My name is Mary Albright. I'm the Executive Director of Longfellow-Seward Healthy Seniors. I've worked for the program for over 10 years now, but I've only been the Director for over a year. We're a Minneapolis-based, living-at-home Block Nurse Program that has been providing services to seniors and caregivers since 1994. We serve over 600 seniors and caregivers annually. In this past year, we broke a new record, and we've served 657 seniors and caregivers. Our mission is to enable community seniors to live healthy, independent, and socially-connected lives. We provide a number of services to help keep seniors living in their homes for as long as possible. Some highlights include in-home nursing visits with a fall prevention assessment, nutritional assessments, sometimes crisis intervention, and Live Well at Home rapid screen testing. Blood pressure in nurses in clinics. We hold monthly at 10 different community locations. We have outreach to immigrant and underserved senior populations, primarily Somali and East African and Asian seniors. We have a monthly senior social and health talk where we have a speaker talk each month about health and wellness issues. We have a diabetes support group, a low-vision support group. We provide services to caregivers such as respite, support, education, and service coordination. We have gentle yoga classes. We have foot care services, volunteer services. We often match up friendly visitor volunteers with isolated seniors, and we have volunteers also take seniors to medical appointments, and occasional light chore services. And we have service coordination, advocacy, and referrals. And I'll give a blue one-page handout to the clerk. I'm here tonight to support the funding allocation in the proposed city budget for one of our sister programs, Nakomas Healthy Seniors, and I would ask you to expand the pool of funds for senior programming in next year's city budget, to include all of the living-at-home Block Nurse programs, including our program and Southeast Seniors, and the people who spoke from that program as well. We're in support of the CINDY's Minneapolis for a Lifetime Strategic Plan to help Minneapolis seniors age in place, and city funding for our programs would further add towards fulfilling your strategic plan for seniors in Minneapolis.
Ma'am, if you could wrap up, please?
Sure. Thank you for your previous funding through community development block funds, and we have a couple of seniors and board members that will be testifying after me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Ann Dalby, followed by Marilyn Johnston?
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Dalby. I'm 90 years old. I like your motto. I think that's great. Minneapolis for a Lifetime. I was born here. I've just got 10 more years, and I'll be 100, and I'm looking forward to that. Now, I recently was involved in an art class that Healthy Seniors sponsored. I love it. I love art. I have two visitors that come and visit me. One of them has a Japanese background, and I've been able to visit her home and learn more about her, I guess you'd say, her whole lifetime style is different from ours. That's very interesting. My other visitor is a professor, and we scrabble together, and it's a tough fight, I'll tell you. Healthy Seniors has been wonderful for my husband and I. Now, Bob died 12 years ago, but when we joined Healthy Seniors, it was just gathering, and I volunteered to sit on the board, and I've been on it ever since, except for the year that Bob was so ill. I took off that year. I believe in Healthy Seniors, in supporting them in every way that you can. Healthy Seniors helped Bob and I so much in those last years, providing rides, providing volunteers to take me grocery shopping, to get undergarments, to get a walker, to get, let's see, a bathtub, a chair. There were so many... There were so many things that they helped us in. Someone who would come and stay with Bob so that I could get out to the share meetings. They had a group of people who had equal, were taking caregiving, and that was a great help for me. After Bob left, there was a grief group that they sponsored. I was part of that. I did work on it, administered to my needs. Every time there's something that affects seniors, we endeavor as a group there to present it, whether it is safety, whether it's a health issue, our group intends to have people there who can better assist us seniors. I regularly attend many things that I think will affect seniors, not because I'm part of that group, but because I want to continue to learn, and I want to be able to have input on the things that will affect the seniors. Although I am aging a little bit, I look forward to serving in my community for a long time. I thank you for the privilege of coming. I pray that you'll support Healthy Seniors. We have a great group there. We have people that come because they are lonely, they come because they need fellowship with other seniors, they need assistance with some of their problems, and Healthy Seniors does that for them. God bless you.
Thank you.